Good morning. Welcome to the Wednesday, September 20th, meeting of the Board of Franklin County Commissioners.
Commissioner Sotomayor.
President.
Commissioner Harris.
President.
Chair Dickinson.
President.
Commissioner Don. Vice Chair Waymeyer.
President.
Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by the invitation led by Pastor Leonard Chesbrough.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. I'm taking my text out of Psalms 51, 1 and 2. Have mercy upon me, oh God, according to thy loving kindness, according to the multitude of thy tender mercies. Bloat out my transgressions, verse 2. Wash me thoroughly from my iniquity and cleanse me from my sins. God is a merciful God. He is a loving God. He is a forgiving God. God sent his son to the cross so he could have forgiveness of our sins. And we all sin. Sin goes back to Genesis in the Bible where Adam and Eve sinned against God. Heavenly Father God, help us to serve you to the best of our ability. Help us always give you praise and glory for everything you do for us. You're such a good God. You're such a forgiving God. You're a loving God, as it states here in Psalms. And Lord God, we just praise you and love you for everything. In Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you. Any correspondence or organizational business? Any public comment? Any public comment today, Janet?
No, we do not.
All right. The consent agenda today consists of the minutes from the September 13th meeting and claim vouchers in the amount of $915,479.04.
Motion to approve.
Thank you.
Commissioner Sotomayor.
Yes.
Commissioner Harris.
Yeah.
Commissioner Waymeyer.
Yes.
Chair Dickinson.
Yes. All right. We have a couple of items of business today that go along with our study session on Monday. So the first one is approval of the fiscal year 2023 adult year end outcome report.
Yes. Good morning, Commissioners. And as you stated, this was discussed in Monday's study session. And the first item for your approval this morning is the adult fiscal year 2023 year-end outcomes. And I'm happy to stand for any questions if you had any more after Monday's study session. Otherwise, we'd be seeking your approval.
I'm ready to make motion to approve.
Thank you.
Commissioner Harris.
Yes.
Commissioner Waymeyer.
Yes.
Commissioner Sotomayor.
Yeah.
Chair Dickinson.
Yes. And the second item of business is to approve the fiscal year 2023 juvenile year end outcome report.
Same thing with this one. We discussed it Monday at the study session, but I'm happy to stand for any questions on how the juvenile one differed from the adult one. Otherwise, we'd be seeking your approval on this one as well.
Motion to approve.
Thank you.
Commissioner Waymeyer.
Yes.
Commissioner Sotomayor.
Yes.
Commissioner Harris.
Yes.
Chair Dickinson.
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thanks.
We're going to move on to staff reports.
One quick thing today. I need, we had a request for fence viewing, and I need a couple of you to volunteer to do that. The address of the property in question or properties is 3468 Utah Road. I know this came to me through you, Don. I don't know if that is in your district. But ideally, you would have the commissioner whose district it's in, and then one other commissioner to... This would involve going out onsite, talking to both property owners, taking notes, obviously, coming back, preparing a written set of findings, basically. And as I explained to the individual who requested it, these findings aren't legally binding. And so, we create findings, we give them to the landowners, and it's going to give, this is what we are asking you to do. But if the landowner doesn't do that, then we don't have, the law doesn't give us any recourse.
Old statute, this being an old agriculture state, and what is it, basically an administrative function they kind of need to exhaust before they can sue each other?
Pretty much it. Yeah.
If it goes that far, maybe they'll...
Hopefully, it doesn't. I think the last one we did, and it's been, gosh, I bet it's been six or seven years ago. I do think we resolved it at this level. But yeah, just need a couple of you to agree to do that.
It's been so long. I know I didn't have to laugh because of the circumstances, but basically, who all besides commissioners would be doing the viewing?
Who decides which commissioners? Who all besides?
Yeah, well, planning and zoning, or legal, or person.
I could send whoever you want out there.
Oh, I just didn't know if there's anything set out. The only thing is statute says commissioner. That's what I meant, you know?
Yeah. Historically, we've just sent a couple commissioners, and it's a function of the county commissioners. So Pat's here, I can only assume because he's excited about potentially doing it, so.
Well, and that's what I kind of mean, you know, you need to, another aspect, just more than what we're just looking. Is there any county regs or something that would affect what we're looking at?
I don't believe so, and I would also...
The last one I did years ago did, because it was a property division and a dispute over fence line. So it did involve planning and zoning, you know?
Yeah.
You know, I didn't know if this one had anything to do with it or not.
And I can't speak for Pat, obviously, but I am happy to go out there with any combination of you two, if that would make you feel better. I mean, for today's purposes, I just need a couple of you. I will refine what all of that looks like.
It's in my district, so.
Okay, so I've got the two, and I'll be in touch with both of you.
Set up a time.
Set up a time. I'll, we'll work with the property owners to do all that. But, okay, good deal.
I was just trying to think, because I know somewhere in my past, I've heard of some kind of regulations for fences. That might have been through my real estate background, you know, that when you sell a property and there's a fence on it, you know, who's responsible, or both of them, or whatever, but I don't have a clue.
Yeah.
But anyway, down the road. But the county itself does not have anything that says...
I don't believe that we do.
And the reason why I ask that, I mean, sometimes there is a legal aspect to what we're talking about, you know? I know sometimes it's an argument over lots of times. I don't even know all the circumstances. But sometimes the argument's over, somebody built a fence, and I want you to pay for half of it.
Oh.
And there's instances where they do have to pay for half of it, and then there's instances where they don't have, legally don't have to pay for half of it. And I don't know if this has anything...
I'll go out and view and then find out the circumstances and then the government.
Yeah. We can discuss the circumstances outside of the public meeting, but yeah, yeah, it's not that. So, yeah. Okay. Yeah, I am. That's all I have for now. Thank you.
All right. Pat, anything for you?
Good morning, Commissioner. Yeah, so I've been in contact with West Franklin High School out of Pomona. And as last year, they built a small structure which turned into a home for an individual that purchased it here in Franklin County. So, the industrial arts teacher, Troy Iflin, is going to do this again. It was kind of a learning curve. They built it, never got any permits, never had any kind of real inspections. I did eventually make my way out there and kind of teach a class while inspecting their structure, just to make sure that we were in some sort of compliance with building code, in the possibility that it did end up in our county, which eventually it did. So, this year, we're trying to get ahead of that curve, and we're going to actually have the school pull a permit for the construction of their structure, and then we're going to do the inspections as well, while having the class present, and then kind of explaining how the process of the building of construction within a zoned community works. And then there's some other stuff that we'll discuss about just construction arts in general. I did talk with the mayor of Pomona, and because it is technically in their jurisdiction, they had the opportunity to take it over, be the individual jurisdiction to do the permitting, the inspections, and everything like that. However, the mayor did not feel that their inspector has the actual certificates that would cover any kind of questions going forward if ever something were to happen with that structure. So, they requested our help with this. And I just wanted to make sure that you guys were comfortable with working with the school and doing sad inspections and permitting. And then also, I was hoping that we could potentially just waive the fees, it's about 300 bucks, to allow for the construction of this structure, if you guys see anything wrong with that.
I personally don't have a problem with it. I mean, I guess, kind of, kind of maybe outside of our scope, but sometimes we have to do those things for small communities that can't afford to what we do or haven't just, it can help, they can come back and help us if there's some issues that we have. So, I don't see a problem with it.
Okay. Okay, I just wanted to make sure it's okay with you guys, and we'll go forward with that. Appreciate it.
While you're here.
Yes, ma'am.
Because I don't know, I don't remember this coming before us, but so, I've seen an advertisement about a long-term RV park at 3067 Georgia Road.
Yes, ma'am.
And has that come before us? Is that, do they have a permit for that?
I contacted the owner of the property yesterday, and I believe Nathan and I will be going out there to explain to him that before you can just advertise something like that, we have to go through the special use process. We're going to have to go through permits and find out what the business model even is. At this point, from a legal standpoint, they cannot be conducting business as such. But I have a feeling you will be seeing that going forward, because we are, he was not aware, the owner of the land was not aware of the special use process. So, I kind of educate him over the phone. We're going to go meet up with him and kind of get an idea exactly what his whole, because it seems like it's a lot more just camping. It seems pretty in-depth. And so, we're going to see what initially he's trying to do, and then we'll eventually get it in front of you guys with the planning commission involved as well. So, yeah, we're trying to slow him down. I think he got the cart in front of the horses and just didn't realize, so.
Awesome. Well, I'm glad. You are on top of things, though, obviously. Thank you.
All right.
You're right. Paul Bean, you anything for us this morning? Dustin? Oh. Oh, shit, yeah. If we get one to every 10-year employee, half of them are going to get thrown back in our face, so I'm sorry. Dustin, do you have anything more for us this morning? No? All right. Chair.
Oh, I just did 10 years, so I hope that's not a personal... Nothing personal. Just wanted to let you guys know that we did make it through the car show very well. I think the weather kind of probably played into the crowd size a little bit, and that threat of hail hurt the crews night a little bit, but overall, everything went well. We will have an official debriefing on it here next week, our after-action, to go over what worked well for us, what we need to improve on, and things like that. So, we try to make a, try to produce a better product from our perspective every year, and that after-action is an important part of that for us. So, and last week, I also had mentioned a little bit about staffing. And just to let you guys know, we do have a couple people who are in our final stages of, in our hiring process. We've got some good candidates. It's always good when you get more applicants than you have positions for, and that's where we kind of find ourselves right now. And so, hopefully, I'll be able to give you guys some names of new hires here very soon. So, that's all I have, unless you guys have questions for me.
Thanks.
All right. Nothing. All right. David Lee.
I'll stay with the staffing theme here. Provided everything goes well today at a pre-employment screening, we will have all of our positions filled for the first time in a while, starting next week when that person comes to work for us. That'll make seven employees that we have that are all within their six-month probationary period. That's a lot of new staff that we have right now. To carry that one step forward, we've got 19 of our 45 positions that are within, that have less than three years of experience in their current positions. So, we've promoted a bunch of people into new, into new positions for them. So, we have a lot of, we just have a lot of new folks right now, and it's kind of exciting. Some of the new folks aren't as experienced as we'd like, but they come with, they seem to have good work ethic, great attitudes, and really are excited to come work with us. So, that's exciting for us. And then next Friday, we will have our fifth retirement of the year, too. So, we have lost a lot of experience, but really excited about those that are coming in. So, that's all I had. Oh, and striping for our chip seal is starting today. So, thank you.
Commissioners, I left you some reports there regarding your claim vouchers. You can see on the top is the report that you generally get from our old system, and then the several pages below that are the report from the new system. Take some time and look over them. Give me some feedback, what you think. We definitely can do a lot of different things with the reporting. This gives you all of the invoices that we paid from the new system, which represented the check run for the 15th. You do see on page 7, the summary like you were getting already. So, if that's something, if you just want the summary, if that's something that you guys want, I can make it so you're just getting the summary. But this gives you a little bit more information. I know from time to time, some of you guys have asked for more information. I don't want to give you more than you want, but we're certainly willing to do more now that we're able. So, take a look at those and give us some feedback on what you think in the coming week or so.
Just looking at when you started talking, it's neat. It's all the good information of the voucher system, but a lot easier to go through.
Yeah. Yeah. There won't be a paper packet of stuff like there has been in the past, just because going forward, all of the invoices will be uploaded to the system. And that'll be much better for all the departments to be able to go back and review invoices themselves and not have to keep a huge paper trail in their office, or have to call my office and be looking for this. So, I think for, you know, like David, you know, if they scan a receipt, then they find out they need to return a part or something, and the guys can't find that receipt, they can always print that right out of the system and have access to that receipt. So, I think there's going to be a lot of functionality.
We're almost getting another layer of checks and balances on money going out. That's great.
Absolutely. Yeah. So, lots of changes. We're in week three of the go-live with the financial management system. My office and the treasurer's office have really been working hard on getting all of this going. Marilyn, the deputy treasurer, has really been working hard to get all of their receipting underhand. And yesterday, we officially learned how to print checks. So, we did run this check run on our old system, but then we went back and entered it all into the new system and accounted for it in there so that we can make sure it all balanced, and that we knew exactly what we were doing. It was a great checks and balances, and we did find out some little neat things that we can do to make the, make our process better. So, we're going to be pushing this out to the individual departments over the next two, three weeks, so everyone can enter their own invoices in. So, that's not something that will be done at my office anymore. We will be double-checking everybody's work as it comes in and pulling those into the check payment process. But right now, we're handling all of that, and we're looking forward to pushing that out. So, that way, receipts don't get lost in inner-office mail, and, you know, it's just a much cleaner process, so.
I love this. I mean, every commissioner has an opportunity to look through the expenses instead of just...
Yep.
Yeah, one. So, yeah, this is awesome. Very much. Cool. All right. I think we'll move on. Don.
Not really too much. I'll let you speak on the ribbon cutting last night. Did my mental little bit about the car show. The county did a lot of help to put this on. I mean, as far as people, you don't see the sheriff and emergency management and the ambulance service. They all provided a service and was there. They're kind of invisible, but they were there, you know? They were ready to take it. But luckily, nothing really came up big or bad, and it really went pretty smooth. It's like for the big storm coming on, but nobody can prevent that at all. So, there was a couple of community entities that really stepped up to the plate. I know the Roastery Cafe downtown provided us all breakfast on Saturday morning for all the people that worked for the club as volunteers, and the Domino's Pizza on Saturday afternoon, provided all the food for us on Saturday afternoon. So, it's kind of made it a real community effort to put that on. I know the club president will come forward for this in a week or two, probably present a summary of everything. That's all, yeah.
I think that's, people are starting to get excited, get a few more questions about the Old Fifty project. Of course, anything we do there, we would post on our website, but you're looking for construction sometime next year, right? I was wondering if, what if we considered, of course, you know, talk to Joanna, whatever she decides best, but putting together like a Facebook page specifically for that? Of course, people can come to us and look for the info, but it's in there with, you know, our 20 departments and whatever other notices we have to put out. But we could start it now, you know, that it's being out for bid, what's going to be done, how many feet are going to be added, kind of a rough timeline, what the white dots are. Get a lot of that, what are the white dots? And anyways, you start building up a following or whatever, but then we push out information to go specifically to people out there on Old Fifty. So, because eventually, we're going to have to put out some, you know, this is the traffic control process, this is when it starts, be prepared before you go to work, those type of things. And then the contractor information, I'm sure that'll be. But anyways, there's enough in the future, especially specific information going out, how far we're going with it, that I think that might be some value, because there's going to be some very interested people, and then quite a bit of information that are, that just they want, so. It might be a good time to start that so that they can, you know, get that established, just the place to get it.
Yeah. I don't know a ton about Facebook, but yeah. I'm sure we can create, even if it's just something on our homepage, an offshoot or something, but yeah, we can do that.
People are more likely to go there for information than the notice section of our website.
We'll have it on our website, too. But we can put a dedicated, yeah, we can put a dedicated page together. And then we've also discussed, and this would come in front of the five of you, but signage as well out there, just to promote it and let folks know that, and this is a big project that's been a long time coming, so.
Yeah. And it will be inconvenient at points, but, you know, the more you communicate, the more you kind of, I don't know, it's expected, so it's not, doesn't hurt. Sting is bad, I guess, so.
I'm going to scoot through some of this because I have something I'd like to share, but I did listen to Senator Marshall's livestream last week, and he has started a real emphasis on depression as it relates to farmers and ranchers, because as bad as our, the Kansas depression rate is, many times that for them, as they're trying to deal with just all the things that are going on right now with the rising interest rates and the drought and everything else that. So, there's a lot out there that sometimes we don't see, but hopefully, we'll be looking for. The employee appreciation lunch last Thursday was awesome. It's one of my favorite days because we get to honor the people that really are Franklin County. You know, some people did get awards for how, for their years of service, but it was just a day to be able, just to remind all of our employees how important they are. I did go to a couple of chamber events, 785 Decor, I had a chamber cafe because they'd moved to downtown. They kind of had a building that was off of the beaten path, and they've moved on to Main Street. I think that'll be good for them. Then they had ribbon cutting at Domino's last night and had free pizza and goodies, and it was all good. And the car show, you know, I think we forget all the car show brings to this county, because we, it's been a part of us for a long time. But I know that the city manager was talking about it, I think, on Monday. This is his first one, and I think when he, you know, when people were getting, you know, permits and things, or asking for things for the car show, he had no idea what was really coming. And I think it's really an eye-opener when it's your first one. We kind of forget, wow, this is really special. So, anyway, car show was awesome. Everybody did a good job, worked together. I thought that was awesome. I wanted to bring something, and I'm going to apologize to my fellow commissioners because they've all heard this. I, last week, talked at the farmyard about something that made some people mad. And after I talked to them, I was like, is this really worth it? Because truly, the county gets nothing from this. And then that, actually, that day, I read something that the bottom line was, if a justice is being done to somebody and you don't do anything about it, then who's going to do it when a justice is done to you? So, I'm moving forward with this. I don't know that it's going anywhere, but the information needs to be out there. So, I'm going to start at the beginning. I love being a county commissioner, but there's a couple of things I really don't like about it. And one of them is that every dollar that we spend, almost all of it, comes from property taxes, because we don't have any other option. There's income tax. We can't charge income tax. Sales tax, counties are limited to 1% or 1, yeah, 1% sales tax, which almost every county already does. And not only do we, are we limited to 1%, then we have to share it with the municipality. So, we're at our limit on that unless we bring it to a vote, and we can do more if the state approves it. But anyway, so that leaves us with property tax. Commissioner Waymeyer said it absolutely perfectly last week when I talked to him. He said, "It's like them asking you to fly a plane, but they only give you one control. You can go up, or you can go down. You can't go this way. You can't go that way. You can go up or down, because the property tax is all we have." But that's not always been the case. In 1937, there was a local ad valorem tax reduction, LAVTR. And you'll hear that, LAVTR, in 1937, every year. Basically, they would give a portion of the sales tax back to the cities and the counties. It continued for 70 years, and then it actually became a state statue in 1965. It's a transfer tax. Doesn't have to be approved by, it's basic, it's there. And twice a year, they would give the taxes to the state and the counties. In the 1970s, there were two more programs that were added. The state, or the counties used to collect taxes on cigarettes, on liquor. I think there was a couple more things, and the state said, "Guess, you know what? Let us collect it, and then we'll give it back to you." That happened in the 70s. Also, in the 70s, they set up a special... Also in the seventies, they set up a special city-county highway fund. Basically, that money came back to the cities and the counties to fund streets, um, and highway projects. This is part of the property taxes you pay on motor vehicles. All of these were to alleviate the property tax burden by replacing the property tax revenue with sales tax revenue. In two thousand and, between two thousand and three and two thousand and five, the state hit a recession. They didn't have enough money to pay their bills and they looked around to figure out, wha- what are we gonna do? And one of their solutions was, "We won't pay the L A V T R tax." And Commissioners Dolmire will tell you, they did it in the middle of the year. They paid the first part and then they decided they weren't gonna pay the second part. So one of the counties went to court and said, "This is a transfer tax, you can't do that, you have to give it to us." So their solution was to go back to Topeka and make it no longer a transfer tax. They just said, "Well, it's not a transfer tax anymore, so we don't have to give it to you." Two thousand and three to two thousand and five, all three of these taxes were defunded by the state. In two thousand and four, they voted to have a much moratorium on it until two thousand and seven. Basically, you can't even ask for it, we don't even want to talk about it until after two thousand and seven. Every year, the counties and the cities have said, "Please pay us money." And the state, it's in the budget, they just don't choose to pay it. It was, I, it, it, yeah, it was not very good for this county for about one year because we did, I'm sure the county did, the only thing that they could do, they raised taxes to cover the amount that was not being paid from the state back to the counties. If the state does agree to start paying the L A V T R tax, it's not gonna add one dollar to our budget because we have to by law replace, basically, the money that they give us and we lower taxes. So all it's gonna do is lower taxes. I don't know, I don't, I'm not sure where, right now, the state has a surplus. Last I heard, it was a three billion dollar surplus, um, and it keeps going up. And since they have not paid these three taxes, it has cost the counties and the cities over three point five billion dollars. That was through twenty twenty-two. For the county of Franklin, um, it's about twenty, twenty million dollars, about a million dollars a year, which the county, the city, the citizens of the county have paid that the state has not given back. I think what made people mad was my last statement, which was, "All of our legislators are up for election next year." Which is true, and you know what, truly, every, every citizen, first of all, you should all vote and second of all, you should hold everybody that you vote for, including the five of us up here, accountable, um, for, you should know what they're doing and you should, you should hold them accountable. So I guess basically, the, the KAC, the Kansas Association of Counties and the League of Municipalities are all, this is, this is a priority this year, they're making it a priority. We ask them, and so we're asking you all to just talk to your legislators and just say, "Consider voting for this, cause it's gonna come up to them and they're gonna vote yes or no." So, we're just saying, ask them to vote yes, uh, and, and only if you care, you know, because we would love to reduce your taxes because we don't like it any more than you do. And, and this is one way that we can, we'd love to find another solution to just not have property taxes being our only. Anyway, hopefully down the road, we can come up with a solution, so.
To help you, just, uh, nobody's left with the wrong message, cause, uh, um, of course, you're not looking for us to get in the proper, uh, any other tax business, you're not looking to us for charge, uh, you know, uh, income tax locally or anything like that, that's terrifying, but what you are saying, uh, we can all agree that the state as a whole, uh, relies on property tax too much and it's the only, the only control we have, so it's not fair from the, uh, top to say to the, you know, the bottom, the, the local municipalities, "Hey, charge less taxes, but we're just looking for other more fair revenue streams to replace the, the property tax and, uh, you know."
Be awesome. Anyway, uh, if you, if you want any more information, I've got lots. Um, but anyway, uh, you'll probably hear more about it as we get into the legislative session, but just, just know that it's out there. I am not pro or against any legislator, I know it's a hard job and you aren't gonna make everybody happy, but, um, it's just an issue that I think something, it's something that they could vote for and help every citizen, well, every taxpaying citizen in the state, um, help relieve some burdens out there that I know, one of them said to me, "Let's don't blame each other," but you know, I think every year, I have been, every year, I've heard them say, "We have to do something about property tax, so help us out." That's all I have to say, alright, I'm done, and I'm sure that. Commissioner Harris is like, "Alright, we're ready to return."
Second.